3:00 PM, stand for the pledge, please.
To the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Adair.
Here.
Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Ms. Kimball.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. Sanderson.
Here.
Mr. Shad.
Here.
I like an approval of the agenda motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for April 11, 2017.
Second. Any discussion? Madam President.
I have an issue about item nine on the agenda, Roman numeral nine, on the agenda. It would appear, and this has been on here before, and I would like to know when, how, why was this board member comments, excuse me, added on here for five minutes each. I don't recall the board ever motioning on this for and/or discussing and voting. And so I would ask that that be stricken from the agenda until such time that we can do the necessary motions and debate and vote.
Any other discussion?
Madam President, if I may, if I may ask a clarifying question. Are you asking to strike from the amendment, from the agenda, the idea that we have board members' comments at all, or you take, do you have qualms with the amount of time allotted?
Precisely, the amount of time allotted, but until, until such time that we can get this done properly, meaning a motion and a debate and a vote, then I would ask that that, that number nine be stricken.
So you are suggesting because of the time issue that we not have board members' comments section?
Pretty much is, because as I've stated before, when I talk, it takes me about two minutes to get my name and address and serial number out. So five minutes on whatever issues that may, may come before board member, at least this board member, I'm thinking five minutes is not enough time, and that there, there need not be any restriction on the time. And I would ask, and each of you get, is entitled to alter what I'm saying whenever, but I'm asking that this whole section be stricken, that section be stricken until such time as we can do the proper motion, debate, and then vote on whether or not we speak at all, or whether or not we have five minutes, no minutes, or 50 minutes to speak.
I'd like to say that, in my opinion, I think five minutes is enough for anybody, or if we take a time limit off it, we could have people rambling on for an hour. So I think that we need to have a time limit on it, and I'm fine with the five minutes, in my opinion, which is my opinion.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam President, if I may. There is a section here for board members' comments, which Ms. Adair referred to, but there is no section for committee reports. Now, committee reports are separate from whether or not board members want to comment on issues in general that are happening in district. A board member may want to comment on something that's not happening on a purview of his or her committee, or just an issue that affects our children that's not otherwise something that he or she can bring to light. And I think the board members' comments section would be great for that, but to, but to not have a section specifically for committee reports, I think that's problematic.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
No.
Mr. Hunter?
No.
Ms. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Shad?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like a motion on the floor for the approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from January 24, 2017, and from March 21, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam President. Ms. Adair? I do appreciate the fact that, that we got our minutes, January 24th minutes, April the 11th, and the March 21st minutes, April the 11th. However, you know, the one is corrected, and the other is, how many weeks away? And I will restate that I would appreciate getting these minutes, these minutes, and as soon as possible after we meet. And if there is a problem with whomever is transcribing the minutes, I would recommend to the group, to the body, maybe we hire a court reporter type who can sit here and take our, our verbiage and transmit them into written form. And then if any, if there's any question about what has been transcribed, then we can raise those issues as soon after the meetings as possible. But once again, January 24th corrected minutes, this is April the 11th, and March 21st, this is April 11th. And just in my opinion, not timely. That's all, Madam President.
Ms. Tyson, how many times did you take these back to re-correct them? Because...
Those, the January the 24th minutes were given to you, I think, a week after the meeting. Then we had to correct them, so that's why you're getting them back again, because you had them in your last meeting. I think your last meeting was March the 21st. You didn't have any meetings in all of March, you only had one. And then, so March 21st minutes, I brought those to you last night so that you could read them over, so that when you got here. But you haven't had any minute meetings to even discuss those minutes up until now, so... But the January 24th minutes, this is not the first time, this is the second time that you...
I understand that. I do. And so it is not a matter of, of the number of times they've been corrected. I appreciate, as was stated in a previous meeting or so, that they are more detailed, which I've been asking for. However, memory not being what it used to be, I would certainly, again, appreciate if we got these minutes in a more timely fashion.
So Ms. Adair, I'm the person typing them now, because I don't have anybody else to type them.
Oh.
And those minutes that I'm giving you, like I said before, they're 95% word for word, everything you say, so that when you get them, you can, because the way your meetings are structured now, they're not like they used to be, so there's not a lot I can write about, but I have been putting those, like I said, they're 95% every word that you say. And I'm the only person that's typing them right now, and I have to do that, like, at home in the evenings, because I have no time in the day to do them. So I'm doing the best I can, and yes, I agree that I would love to have somebody else help me out to get them typed.
What happened to that person?
She doesn't, after all the other, because, you know, how many times that you didn't like those, she's not available anymore, so...
When did that happen?
Way back in the summer. I've been typing them my own self ever since.
Oh, you have been?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Upstanding.
Mr. Hunter?
Outstanding.
Ms. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Shad?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone to address the board, Mrs. Tyson?
No.
We're gonna move on. We have Ralph Meacham today with us.
Whoa. Bob Akilah is with me today. Surety and Oatry wouldn't make it.
Welcome, come on up to the front. I requested that Mr. Meacham come to our meeting today to kind of explain to us tax abatements, why they are, how they are, and the percentages, and any other information that he can give us on, if that can be changed or whatever. So the floor is yours, Mr. Meacham.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'll start, and excuse me if I start too basic a level, but we'll just start with the, there's three basic vehicles for this, CRA, Community Reinvestment Act, Enterprise Zone, or the TIF, Tax Incremental Financing. And some of these work very similarly. And I think the first thing to understand, if I use this for illustrative purposes, let's say this is a piece of property, and this property is valued at $500,000, and that's what it's taxed on now. And so a developer comes out and said, "I'd like to build something on this, I'd ask for a tax, a TIF, Tax Incremental Financing." So let's just suppose if it's, well, if it's over 75% or more, the school board must approve this. If it's less than that, it does not require the school board's approval. So let's say this $500,000 piece of property, right now, the school district and whoever the subdivision, they're getting tax, tax sales, I'm sorry, real estate taxes on that half a million dollars. Let's say it's a 10-year TIF at 50%. So through this whole TIF, you will continue to get the real estate tax on that piece of property for the full 10 years and thereafter. But that other 50%, 50% of the improvements on that property will go to the school board or whomever. That other 50% will be used for infrastructure on this. So the developer will continue to pay 100% of the taxes. What was on here before, and the 50% that the school board is getting, the 50% that the subdivision is getting, that will, the 50% that subdivision would have been getting will be diverted for infrastructure on this piece of property, not miles away, but right here. So every year, as this developer develops this property, and it's not going to take 10 years, might take one, two, or three years, that value will increase, and the school board will increase, receive the increased tax revenues from this piece of property as it increases until it reaches its maximum. And then after 10 years, 100% of the taxes are refunded to all the entities, including the school board. So I guess people have the first misconception that you'll lose something. Well, you won't really lose anything, because you'll continue to get 100% of the taxes on that raw land or whatever it was, and then 50% of the improvements on that. Then after 10 years, you'll get all the taxes on the entire development. Is that okay? I mean, following that one? Any questions on that?
Do you have a question?
I'm not following that.
You're not?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Let's just say that there's a piece of land on Federal Street, and that, it's a vacant lot. And right now, that vacant lot is worth, let's say, half a million dollars. So the school right now is receiving real estate taxes on that half a million dollar piece of property there. If nothing happens to that property over the next 10 years, they'll continue to receive their real estate taxes on that half a million dollar piece of property. If a developer comes in and develops that, you will see, receive an increased amount of real estate taxes on that as you go. And let's say, again, the 10-year tax incremental financing, so you'll continue to receive all of that half million dollar property for now and 10 years, all the way into the future. You will receive 50% of the improvements on that going forward, and then 100% after 10 years. But the other 50% of those improvements will be diverted into infrastructure. That's the difference.
Okay, so what is, maybe I missed this, what is the abatement? How does that impact the request for, say, a 75% tax abatement for 15 years?
It works, it works very similarly, okay? Tax abatements, enterprise zones, or commercial tax abatements for housing. And Bob, do you want to address this part?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead. The, the CRA is the Community Reinvestment. Those abatements can be up to 100%. The enterprise zones are not, they're capped at 75%. Now, if Youngstown Developmental Corporation, if they want 100% on a property, an abatement, they need to notify the board. It has to pass your muster first, you have to agree to it. You can address them, and it's called a comment section, and somebody from the board could meet with them, and you get together, and you express your concerns about the 100%. If it's 75% or less, they could just go ahead and do it. But as far as the 100%, and you can't get 100% on the enterprise zone. Those are just the community reinvestment, which are more your housing developments, like all the, what they did up in Westlake over there, up in that neighborhood up in there, all that housing, those are all CRAs. And actually, by the way, a lot of those are expiring in taxure 2016, so those will be coming back on to the duplicate as taxable. And that's where the difference between those. Yes?
So with the example that you gave, that half million, and this company then asked us for a 75% abatement. So the way you described it, we would get whatever the value of the real estate is, and plus 50% of the improvement.
Or 75% or 25%.
So, so when they ask for that abatement, what do those numbers look like? Does the real estate, like the half million on, on regular, the real estate requirement, does that, that would change, right?
Well, the base piece of property, that value would stay the same for the whole period.
The value of the property, yes.
And the tax is coming off of that. Any improvements would increase the value of that property.
Right.
And you get half of the value of the improvements in taxes over that period, over the 10 years.
I guess that's where I'm getting stuck.
The land, the land is not abated. Yes.
Oh, you, okay. We're just talking about, then we're talking about what happens on top of the...
After that, yes.
Okay, okay. All right.
So you kind of look at the decision here. If you want to give the abatement and encourage the development, then you do that. If you don't encourage the abatement, and it's not developed, then you get what you had before, but nothing more in the future. Again, you have to, the other assumption is here, the developer will, would not do this or would do it because of the abatement. Some developers will, some will not. And that's not just here, that's throughout the whole county.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. There's one other thing that Bob offered here about the CRAs, and he showed it very before we came up. Let me read this, please. It's from Ohio Department of Commerce, Section 5709.83, notifying school districts of proposed tax exemptions. And there's a lot here, I'll just go to the two sentences, three sentences that are pertinent. If the Board of Education comments on the instrument or application to the legislative authority or housing officer, we're talking about a CRA legislation, the legislative authority or housing officer shall consider the comments. If the Board of Education of the city, local, or exempt village or joint vocational school district so requests, the legislative authority or the housing officer shall meet in person with a representative designated by the Board of Education to discuss the terms of the instrument or application. So in your invitation to come today, you said you wanted to know what you could do about it? You could negotiate with the housing agency about what that CRA should be, what the abatement should be. Yes, sir?
We're talking about the 100% abatement for housing, right?
Yes, in that case.
Okay. And you say negotiate, would have, to negotiations, we still don't want to do that? Either we drop out of 75% or not?
It's what they would agree to. I mean, you could stop the project. If there's, if they're set on 100%, it needs your approval.
Right, but the CRA, they can get 75 regardless.
I believe they can.
So we're basically talking about the other 25%.
Oh, no, they could, they could make it whatever they want to make it. And that's the negotiable part of this, between the board and the authority.
So, but it's between 0 and 100%?
I'm sorry?
It's between 0 and 100%?
Yes, yes.
What I'm saying is, the, the piece that the board has, the authority that says no on, is just that 25%, am I correct? That's how it works?
75%. Yes, that's correct.
Oh, okay. So the other 25%, you say that's what the board negotiates saying?
Right, if it's 75% or less, they do not need to go through the Board of Education.
Right.
Okay, if it's above 75%, they need your approval.
Right, okay. But it's just, when we talk about negotiations, or they're talking about maybe hiring or something, or what, what?
They're not all 100%. They're not.
Right, I, I, we've seen a lot of complaints, we're concerned about the, the other ones sometimes, because likely we wouldn't get more requests for 100% versus 75%. That's, that's, that was the difference.
Right. How about student housing? Isn't that 100%? Like at the university, the buildings they're building up there? If they have a community reinvestment abatement area up there, if they designate that area, then yeah, it will qualify.
Do we have any, can we offer up an objection legally? Can we offer an objection to that 100% abatement on student housing?
I'm not familiar with that, I didn't, I... I think it's more of a legal question.
Yeah, for the prosecutor's office.
We were led to believe, I was led to believe, that we have no say-so. Student housing is entitled to a 100% abatement regardless of what we say. That's, I guess that's the gist of my question, is that...
I don't really know.
Oh, you don't?
I could circle back, prosecutor's opinion. We, we don't negotiate, the Otter's Office does not negotiate these, we account for them. We make the adjustments to the tax duplicate, and we make sure that we, these things are filed with us, these documents. We are not decision makers. We just file and make sure they're executed as prescribed by law. Anything else? Sure.
How often do you, officers of your department that comes around every so many years and reevaluates property values?
Yes, we're doing it right now.
And?
2017, we revale, every six years, we're mandated to do it. We hire an outside appraisal, mass appraisal. It's not like buying a house, not that kind of appraisal, it's a mass appraisal. We have 240,000 parcels in Marone County, and they're wrapping up their work pretty soon. In the next several months, we'll be releasing those values to the public and invite their conversation with us. Yes, it's, it'll be a tax year 17, which will be taxed in 18.
So my question is, if, for instance, you come by my house and you evaluate it at some price, I'm like, no! Okay, is there a way to...
Yes.
Okay.
Board of revisions. You take it to the Board of revisions.
Board of revisions?
You get filed with my office, and I, is it December, March 31st? March 31st is the deadline, and it takes us a while to get those organized, and then you'll be scheduled a hearing, you can come in and talk to us. And it's a three, three-person panel, one person from the Otter's Office, I think, one from the prosecutor, one from the treasurer.
Right.
And they sit together and they listen to you. You do not have to have an attorney there. And it's not things like, I have noisy neighbors, it's not the jibba, barking dog, it's, it looks, they look at the value of your home compared to everyone's around you. Our goal is to set a fair market value for your property compared to all the other ones around you. And you certainly have a chance to talk about that and discuss that.
That's both low ball and high ball. If, if, for example, you evaluated my property too low, can that be appealed as well?
If you'd like, that's highly unusual.
No evaluation. Do they, do they do like area, they don't do house to house, they do pricing, it's specific to this?
Well, they go house to house.
House to house?
House to house. Yeah, it's, it's computer-driven. We have every parcel on our website, invited to go look at your parcels through the online website. We do overhead flights, we match those, it's for you, image of your property from the top, usually at a 45-degree angle, and they go through every one. Now, it's, again, they have, it's not boots on the ground like it used to be. These are people with computer screens, and they're going through every, and they look at sales, recent sales, and a lot of neighborhoods are kind of similar. Then you look for sales in the neighborhood, trying to see what the prevailing market price is in your neighborhood, and that's how the appraisal is done.
I assume that the neighborhood appreciated Timmersett, and everybody talks about Timmersett, but it's not like the whole neighborhood is with the whole...
No, no, it'd be by house, by house, by parcel. Everyone's house is not, is not the same. And it's not perfect, but remember, 240-some thousand parcels, it's, they do the best they can. Yes, sir? Who tracks the abatements, like when they're up after 10 years? Do you? My office does that. Your office does that? Yeah, Bob looked today, and we have 389 CRA parcels right now in the City of Youngstown, and Enterprise Zones, 25 parcels right now. And as he alluded to, he looked quickly before we came, a lot of those CRAs are coming on this year after taxure 16, which is what we're paying right now, taxes running or behind. So a lot of that's coming on. Thank you.
I have one other question. This, this deals with the Homestead Act.
Sure.
I know people with disabilities or, or, you folks receive a discount. How is that, that tax funding that would have come without Homestead Act, how is that made up?
Through the state.
Through the state?
Yeah, yeah. We get, we get back in the state.
And how often do folks have to apply?
Once you're on, you're on. But we do go back, in fact, we're doing a checkup right now, to make sure that, sometimes people die, and their heirs don't bother to tell us that a person is no longer living there, we go back and look it up. What age is that, Homestead? It's 65 now, I think. 65. It's a 25% not reduction in taxes, it's a 25% reduction in the assessed value of your house. And there are income limitations, too. They slide a bit, it's a, it's increasing a bit. So you have to provide some proof of your, your income and proof of your age to get the Homestead exemption.
When you say, is it about your house or a real estate? Is it just the house or the real estate itself?
Well, probably.
Right, because you know how you assess them, you put land and improvement.
Yes, yes, yes.
So it's the whole?
Yes.
For the exemption, if your situation changes, your income either goes up or goes down?
Goes up, you have to come off.
If it goes up, you have to come down.
Yes, yes.
But if it goes down?
You can, you can follow.
Can you reapply for a change?
Yes.
Another questions or concerns for Mr. Meacham? No questions from this end down here? Sanderson, Mr. Shad, Mr. Hunter?
This is not easy stuff. It's very complicated. Please call, have to come back and talk, or call me, call my staff. We had a meeting like this two days ago with Springfield Township, asking the same types of things for CRAs and TIFs, so we're there to help you, so give us a call. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time and your patience, because you were on three times, so thank you.
Sorry. Happy to be here. Thank you.
Do we have a treasurer's report today?
This is not the report that I wanted to give you, because I was, we ran a little bit longer than I thought we were going to, so I didn't have time to pull everything together, but I did want to bring this to you at least. Have you pulled that sheet out that I gave you? Because I'm going to give you another one at our next board meeting, it'll be more detailed, it'll have the five-year forecast comparison on there as well. But all this is right now is just the balance that we started with on July 1st of this fiscal year. It's all the revenues that we've taken in each month up until the month of February, because I haven't closed March yet. It's all of our expenses as well, but only in the general fund, because you know, that is the, I hate to say it's the most important fund, but when it comes to this district's strife, thriving, if anything were to happen, is the most important fund, it takes all the hits that, you know, none of the other funds are allowed to take. So what we have down here is our salaries, wages, benefits, materials and supplies, purchase services, capital outlay. And then at the top, you just see, this is how many pays we had each month that we're looking at, when you look at your wages and your benefits, so that you know what you're looking at. This is up to February, so we have March, April, May, and June, so that's 2, 4, 6, eight more pays to go in this particular fiscal year. And as you can see, the balance right now in the general fund is this $22,908,487. And so, like I said, at our next board meeting... And so, um, like I said, at our next board meeting, I'll bring, uh, a more detailed report, but I did want you to have something to look at, just in case, before we have that meeting, if you have any questions about any of these items that are on here, feel free to email me, so that I can address them, um, at our next meeting.
Uh, President.
Yes, I do. I have a question. Uh, Ms. Tyson?
Mm-hmm.
Um, res, total receipt?
Yes.
Five million went down considerably. Now, this, can you tell me, tell us, what all does that entail?
Yeah, next time when I bring the report, I will, but, um, it, it could be anything. We have, some months we have taxes, some months we don't have taxes. Some months I've requested money for our, um, uh, not, sometimes we get, uh, money back from Medicaid, um, it's a reimbursement that we get, and some, some months we don't have, uh, Medicaid reimbursements. Sometimes we, um, get, um, yes, Miss...
Medicaid reimbursements?
Yeah, we get, um, I'll have to explain to you. We get a reimbursement for Medicaid, um, um, I'm not sure, uh, what it's actually for, but I can give you more information on it when I come back. But sometimes we receive those, sometimes we don't, you know? Sometimes we have a lot of, um, FBI, BCI, we have a lot of, um, the little five dollars that we get for, um, the transcripts, that's, that's no money. But our huge, our, our big money is our foundation payment and taxes. That's where our largest revenue comes at, on, on this paper that you're looking at.
So, that, so then, September of last year, where we got, when we received eighteen mil, uh, that was, would you say, had to do with tax?
Yes.
And some, some of the other...
Yes. I'll break that revenue out, um, in the next paper that I give you.
And then, if, um, February, we spent more money than we took in. We spent seven-point-two mil, we only took in five-point-three.
Um, I think in February, we had a, um, we got taxes, um, it's called, so it was a deposit in transit, but it came late, and so it didn't get posted until the month of March, and so that's probably why those look different. And, uh, for that month, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Those are, those are my questions.
Through the chair.
Mr. Shad?
Can you? And maybe this is something for the future, but the, um, huge fluctuation of salaries in two thousand, in September, like, I, I noticed the salary increase, but the, um, the, uh, fringe benefits were, like, lower than what they were previously, like...
Yeah, um, the salaries are increasing there because, number one, uh, okay, so in June and, um, in, in September would be when we start to pay out all of our, um, severance payments. And so, that's going to be a lot of money, and you have that overlapping of your contracts ending and new contracts starting, new hires, you know, people retiring, so that's why you're seeing a big fluctuation of the revenue, uh, in the salaries. And we had a lot of people, uh, retired last year.
Do you break that out in some other report?
Yeah, I will, and I'll break it out by, um, uh, full-time, part-time...
Okay.
Overtime.
Yes.
Temporary, yeah, I'll, I'll break it down.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Sanders?
I have one question. Um, everything else here is basically self-explanatory. Um, capital outlay, could you explain a little bit?
Yeah, and that's any type of, um, computers, technology, um, anything that the district needs, that's, uh, what are your cameras, could be, um, uh, whiteboards, basically that's what that would be. For classroom, most of that.
Okay. Do you recall when they, uh, recently purchased, uh, the tablets over for East High School?
Yeah, and that was in a month of March, it was paid in March, it'll be on the next report, because when I close out March, that'll show up.
Okay.
And did anybody have any questions about the information that I put in your folders last night?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I guess, I'm sorry. Um, about the, um, breakout of the, um, this...
That was in your folder last night.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I did, I gave it to everyone.
Yeah, thank you. Board members' comments, we'll start with Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to use at least a substantial portion of my Board Members' Comments section to, uh, update the board and, uh, the public, those who weren't in attendance, on the recent Finance Committee meeting that was held. Um, I'd like to break this down into three categories, three areas, the purpose, the discussion, and the outcome. So, the purpose of the meeting was to simply structure future meetings of the Finance Committee, and to determine the focus, the financial focus of future meetings, the issues that we would tackle. So, it, in a way, it really was just a way of orienting the committee for its future meetings, and towards the end of discussing what future meetings would be about, we brainstormed about a number of different financial issues in the district. And some of those issues that were raised included, uh, the cost of lawsuits and legal representation, um, getting more complete and regular financial reporting for the board, for the sake of the public, uh, the announced, uh, departure of the treasurer, uh, monies paid out to, uh, the Educational Service Center, uh, duplicative salaries for duplicative positions, uh, the issue of whether or not we're getting our monies worth in terms of transportation services, whether it's truly more cost-effective to check out of Judge Delick's early warning system and bring on a number of social workers, um, the issue of whether or not teachers' wages were adequate to get the kind of, uh, benefits we hope to get from the highly qualified teachers we want to have in this district. And also, the issue was raised of subwages, if, if, if those wages were well-suited to getting, uh, the kind of subs that we need for our students, and the issue of supplementary program expenses, whether or not those programs we have in the district are worth the cost, which is really a cost-benefit analysis question. Many of these areas that were raised were cost-benefit analysis questions. So, in terms of the outcome, we narrowed those topics down, because ultimately, we don't have an infinite amount of time to get together and have meetings, and, um, we did discuss that we would like to meet at least once a month going forward for the rest of this year as a committee. Uh, so we narrowed it down to a number of umbrella topics, the issue of the, uh, announced departure of the treasurer, which is a big issue for people, because it is, it was announced to be imminent, uh, the issue of having complete, and more complete and regular financial reporting, which kind of connects to all of these other issues that were, were raised at the meeting, the issue of the costs spent on lawsuits and legal representation, the issue of salaries, which includes all those concerns raised about duplicative, uh, administrator salaries, uh, teacher wages, subwages, and the issue of transportation, whether we're getting our monies worth on, on, uh, in terms of what we are putting out in the transportation portfolio. Uh, we agreed as a committee that the next meeting that we had would deal with the issue of the treasurer's imminent departure and more complete and regular financial reporting. We felt those were the high priority areas to move forward with for the next meeting, that we would continue to discuss and brainstorm as to how we would set priorities for the future meetings, but we did come to some, to some sense of a consensus about which issues we considered the most important in terms of how we will move forward. Uh, on, on a side note, we agreed to conduct our meetings relatively informally, it's a committee of two people, so we agreed to suspend the rules, just so the meetings would flow better, and, uh, we agreed that, as I mentioned earlier, we would commit at least to calling meetings at least once a month, uh, as a special meetings of the board with a set announced purpose, so the public is aware when meetings are, are being held and what exactly will be discussed. Uh, if there's any areas that I've missed, I'm sure I can depend on Ms. Sanders and my fellow member of the Finance Committee to raise those areas in her Board Member Comments section. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Shad?
I'd like to talk about, uh, my travel to the National, uh, School Board Association, um, conference that was held in Denver, Colorado. Uh, Denver was a fine host city, and the information that we received there was invaluable. The first thing I want to talk about is, um, Apple was there, and they were talking about how they, how to use the, um, technology. If we're using technology just to have children read from, uh, read from it instead of reading from a book, we're using it wrong. They gave us an example of how they use the project for a volcano. Imagine the child has a project to where they have to make a volcano an amusement park. So, they, they were able to show you how you can use a whiteboard to draw a volcano on there, then draw anything that you want to have, like, let's say it was a, you know, I don't know, a sliding board or something like that. You can draw that, have the voice over it, so you can explain it, and then have, um, graphics moving that the child drew to, to further explain the project. It, it showed a way to, to have, um, our technology that we use be more interactive, be more, uh, uh, show a more creative side from, from the child's perspective, but also take that volcano project and say, if we're turning that, that volcano into an amusement park, what else is needed? Well, you have to, you know, figure out transportation from your parking lot, you have to figure out food, you have to figure out if you want to sell, uh, uh, souvenirs and those sorts of things. So, it turned this, as, uh, a geological project into something much bigger. And if we look at our use of technology in this way, we would be able to, like, expand our children's horizons by having them focus on, uh, by, by having their focus widen from just that project being something that we used to see as a clay model with some, uh, baking soda, food coloring, and vinegar, to something much greater. So, um, I did make contact with Apple, and they're willing to, uh, talk with us and our, and hopefully anyone else that wants to listen about how we can use our technology more interactively to benefit children and not just use it to replace, uh, textbooks in a sense. Um, another piece was, that I engaged in was the engaging our, your community to redefine student discipline. Now, this is a project that came out of, uh, Virginia Beach, where the focus of this piece was, there were a huge amount of, um, there were a huge amount of, uh, absences, suspensions and, and, uh, expulsions for African-American males. So, they wanted to take a look at what was the cause of these things, and so from that, they, they understood that their whole policy was flawed. Now, they did not say that, they, they, they wanted to stand on this. Children were able to get suspended, they were able to get expelled. The issue was, they had a team talk to the child to see what was the issue around that suspension. So, it, or around that problem that caused the suspension, because, let's say, well, I want to make an example, but I will just say, with their, with their approach was, okay, we have this, this child, they're in a vulnerable position, we need to bring in our team, need to bring in their parents, and maybe even the, the, the child who they were in a scuffle with, and, and those families, and work on a solution, so it wouldn't be systemic. Uh, that would cut down on bullying, cut down on reoccurring actions with that particular child, with those particular children, but also look at, what are the problems that caused it? Was it, maybe the kid was getting teased because his shoe's working, you know, new, or maybe they were ripped, or something like that? So, how do you fix those problems? So, they wanted to take a real holistic look at what their, uh, restorative justice would be versus just repairing that relationship with whomever those children were who caused a, a fight or, or disruption. From, but the, the important thing was, once they fixed that problem, they showed a reduction in suspensions and expulsions for all their children, because even though they sought out to reduce it for African-American males, they, they saw that the, the flaw was in the system, and they were able to repair that piece, and it caused more, uh, it caused a drop in, in those, uh, in those outcomes. So, they're also willing to share more information, and we, I want to set up a few things from this, uh, conference for the people I met, to really talk about how we, as a district, could move in some ways to do, to do some things that are like, um, that are great, because not every idea is going to be solved by the people in this building, but I think if we can take that great thing that's happening in Virginia Beach, the great thing that's happening, you know, in, um, in, as, as spring, in, uh, Colorado Springs, that I want to talk about, and bring those things to our district, is going to help us work with those children that are having issues, and help us, uh, excel the children that, that are, that are, uh, that are doing well, you know? So, that was one thing there. The other piece in Colorado Springs, they had an approach to, um, early college as it was first designed for us. When it was first designed, it was supposed to be a program where you had that B.C. student that wasn't sure about college, having the opportunity to be able to explore college in a safe environment, and get credits at that same time. Our program, and, and this is not a, uh, this is to the benefit of our children, became a program for the children that was, that were extremely elite, you know, and, and that, and that's great, because we've seen great numbers come from our early college programs. Like, last year, we had thirty kids graduate with associate degrees, over sixty kids had, uh, had credits, and were almost twenty-one-hundred credits from that classroom, so we had a lot of children very close to getting those associate degrees. What they did was, they said, well, let's take technology and have virtual learning from K to five, and then from six to, to twelve. The K to five piece was really interesting, because they had children have the option of only come to school for three days, and then in those other two days, working on computers at home to offset any, um, issues they had with literacy, math, and those sort of things. This whole project, or this whole meeting I went to was about reading gaps, and this was the way they saw their reading gap problems, was to have children in a, in an environment where they can get up to level and not miss class instruction. Because what's tip, what's, what's typically happened is that you have kids that need help in reading. What happens? A specialist comes in, removes them from a class, they get taught on a, on a lower level, and then they're not taught on the things there'd be a test on. So, now you have that gap in learning. They saw that problem by having that kid be able to work independently on those days with instruction from a virtual teacher, or the teacher, the classroom teacher, but virtually, and then have them have class instruction that kept them at level. And they were doing this from K to five. Now, they mentioned it's not for all families, but it is for those families that, that it works best for. It may be good for some of our families who necessarily don't want their children, they're homeschooled, but they want their children to have some experience, but not all. It may work good for those, uh...
Mr. Shad?
Yeah.
Are you guys doing fine?
I, yeah, I might have, is that over? Okay. Well, I'll put a pin in that.
Mr. Shad?
Well, uh, Mr. Shad, I think you took my time. That's...
Uh, sorry.
No, that's all right. I'll keep it short. I just wanted to basically piggyback off of what you were saying. Um, I think it was very enlightening, uh, that you found some information, um, that's dealing with, um, school safety, and, um, also about, uh, student behavior and, uh, discipline. Um, I, last time I was at board meeting, that's one of the topics that I wanted to address, and that's what I want to bring before you as a body. Um, I still intend on having that special meeting, and I do have a presenter that's able to come and do a presentation, and I have a couple of agencies, um, that will be available, um, afterwards, um, to help some of our families and our students, and also our administrators about school safety, um, cyberbullying, um, harassment, school violence, and I think, uh, some of the topics that he covered, um, talking about behavior modification and school accountability is very important to need, to be addressed. Um, and, uh, the public needs to know that we are tackling those issues. Definitely, suspension all the time or expulsion all the time does not work, that's not necessarily a deterrent, and, uh, we, you know, just overlooking and not suspending, that doesn't work as well. And so, I just wanted to ask Madam President, um, from our fellow board members, about their availability, um, for us a special meeting at the end of this month. I know, usually, we have board meetings, um, the last Tuesday of the month, and I'm not sure if we're having any, and if we are, what days does someone would be available? I know Fridays is, uh, not available for some of our board members. Does anyone have any obligations?
Thursday's, I'm...
Thursday, okay. Okay. All right. So, I will give, uh, the public and also our fellow board members proper notice of which day, um, I'll can secure with, um, my presenter and, uh, give you further information. Thank you.
I have some, uh, not really comment, but questions. I would like to meet, I would like the board to meet with the CEO about the new school calendar. I have a lot of questions about the times and the stuff he's going to do with the calendar, and, uh, I think the school board deserves an explanation, and so he could answer our and so he could answer our questions and explain what his thoughts are. And I'd like to explain my thoughts. The kids we catch up during the summer, what's going to happen to them kids if they're going all year? How is he going to make up that time to catch those kids up? And I'd like you to see if he can meet with just the board and go over a few things.
The CEO's committee, so Mr., yeah, can set that meeting up for us. I don't want to...
But I don't want it to be just a committee meeting. I want it to be the whole board, so we could all do it.
Set it up. Mr.?
Only comment I have, I want to thank the board members for having a good meeting yesterday. I like that we did sit down, compromise, and I hope we can continue working together. I know we're not always going to agree on how things should be done, or... But I was just proud that we did compromise and work together. And if we can continue doing that, I think we'll be a strong board.
Ms. Sanders. I have questions that I will raise about some specifics, primarily about the information contained in the treasurer's report that I asked for. And then, of course, my ongoing concern about the special education issues confronting the district. I will be meeting with some folks, some parents, who have had ongoing issues with our Special Education Department. And when I get more information, I will bring that back to the board for discussion and perhaps some vote, some vote on how we wish to proceed. And that's basically it, Madam President.
I don't have a real report today, but I do have some concerns that's been brought before me from several families in our school district. They're concerned about our programs and our school buildings. They've heard, and I haven't, but they've heard that our programs are going to be removed this year, and that we're going to have eight K through eight school buildings and two regular high schools. Parents need to know what's happening in this district. You know, no matter how great our district is, if we don't have students, we don't have a district. And they feel like they're being kept in the dark, and I feel they are as well. Many of them said they've called for meetings, and I don't know that they have, but there's been no return phone calls for them. A lot of them are waiting, they're waiting, they don't know what to do with their children, because we have a lot of great special programs in our district that do work, that brought back students, and that students enjoy. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to get this meeting with the CEO again, so that these questions can be answered, because nobody else deserves them, parents do. They need to know what's going to happen with our school district. And right now, there are pins and needles, because many of them, as you know, you know, you can go from one program to the next, and they don't know what to do with their children. And so we just need some explanations on what's going to happen with our district. And I am also concerned about the calendar as well, because I don't know that expanding the school year helps children to learn any more than they learn with vacations that they have now. And again, like Mr. Murphy said, in the summer, we had tutors and things to help catch those students up that were behind. You know, some tutors wanted one to come to the homes and things. So if you have a year-long school, okay, and those students are behind, because I just, and this is just my opinion, I don't think they're going to take in any more than they would take in on a regular school year that we have now, then they're going to school all year. Where is the time for that one-on-one tutoring, you know? Where is the time for that summer school? And also, and this is just a small part of my report from the conference in Colorado. It was a great conference, it was a great conference. But, and I forgot. One thing that I listened to, this is from New York, and I have more coming. I'm setting up some Skype sessions for them. They were, they had the state in their district for eleven years. Yeah, and they were very concerned. And during those eleven years, nothing happened to improve their district, except that their funding was spent. The Washington Post. And they're wanting to know how they can help us dig ourselves out of this with the state. Everyone seems to believe that it's very unfair how it's working. They don't like the fact that the board has no authority, that funding is being spent without accountability, no checks and balances to the board or to the community. And so we're going to be having some sessions, but I just wanted to at least talk about that for now. Thank you.
Madam President. Ms. Sanders. I have a question about what you said about programs. What programs, what are you talking about?
Well, and again, like I said, I have no concrete proof of this, okay? But what I'm hearing from parents is that they've gotten a word, and I don't know where, like I said. But that's why we need to know, we need an explanation, that our early college is going to be pulled from Youngstown State University, that our performing arts programs are going to be pulled, but I don't know that. And, you know, I'm not going to answer, give folks answers that may not be researched, because I don't know. And that's why I'm requesting that something happens, a press conference with the CEO, to let parents know what's going to happen in this district. It's almost the end of the school year, and they have a right to know what their kids, what's going to be available for their kids next year, what their opportunities are going to be, you know? Hopefully, we don't lose our students, because all of those great programs that actually do work brought students back to this district.
Another question or comment. The government has been involved in education more than just New York. We all know about Michigan. And so I would just remind everybody that the state has been here in Youngstown since 2010.
Right.
And so it is not that like they've just been absent without lead, but they've been here directing academic traffic. And we find ourselves now under total control of the state. And so somehow or another, the board has been blamed, fingers have been pointed at us for that failure, when we all should know, we all should know. If you don't by now, you should know that the state, since 2010, they've been here.
Yeah, they have been here, and actually, they've written the plans for our school district. The board had nothing to do with the plans that were written. And many, many times, during executive session with the Academic Distress Commission, we as a board requested that we be able to write our own plan or use the plan that's already in place. It was created by stakeholders in the community, but we were turned down. They said that we had to use their plan, and that was the only plan that would be used. So it is unfair for the board. I hear people say leadership didn't do what they should have done, but that has been since 2010. And there were things that this board put in place in the past that actually worked, that, you know, was removed, and other programs replaced them, that we requested not to have in our district, but because the Distress Commission was controlling the district, and that's what the past superintendent wanted, is what happened. Moving on. Any new business?
Sue the President.
Mr. Shad.
I'd like to make a motion that we do add three minutes for board committee comments per meeting.
I'll second that. So that would be a total of eight minutes?
It would be nine, there's three committees, so it would be nine minutes.
Oh, you're talking about the...
The committee.
Separate line.
Yeah, so...
Excuse me, you mean a separate line on here for committee reports, three minutes?
Mm-hmm, for future meetings.
For future meetings, per chair.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call? I knew I wouldn't get any discussion on that.
Mr. Williams? Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Shad?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a need for an executive session?
Madam President, I think so.
How many minutes? Hey, this is Easter break, I gotta go over the dials.
You ready for the motion? Madam President, I'd move that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of, let me see, complaints against an official.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Williams?
Will be the action taken after the meeting?
No, won't do the say that afterwards, we just need our vote now.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Shad?
Yes.
There will be no action taken when we adjourn to adjourn. Thank you.